Everybody ready? If everybody have a seat, we'll go ahead and get started. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Sotolongo, Dave Rosacker, Vice Chair, and I'm Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslow, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Current Planning Manager, Planning Board Amendment, I'm sorry, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Debbie Hightower is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table down here in front of us. You're welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard or perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cellphones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room, and we have a change to our consent agenda. We are adding number 18 to the consent agenda as an approval. Number 18, Agenda Item Number 18 is added as an approval. We'll go ahead and get started with our consent items. Okay, Agenda Item Number Two, Case C-10-22-203, C-12-22-204. Applicant Scott Brown, One Professional Square LLC. It is on for layover. Request preliminary plat approval of Antler View West, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, R7, and MU. This was laid over from the December meeting. Location southwest of 192nd and West Maple Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Three, Case C-3-22-287, C-10-21-209, C-12-21-210. Applicant Westwood Solutions LLC. It is on for approval. Request preliminary plat approval of State and Highway 133 Edition, lots three through eight, Outlots C and D, a subdivision outside city limits with approval of a rezoning from AG to GI along with approval of a waiver to the PDZ Present Development Zone. This was laid over from the December meeting. Location northwest of State Street and Blair High Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Five, Case C-8-21-233. Applicant Westwood Solutions LLC. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the Large Project Special Use Permit to allow communication services in the GI District. This was laid over from the December meeting. Location northwest of State Street and Blair High Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Six, Case C-10-22-319, C-8-3-89, C-8-22-320. Applicant Patrick Ackerman. It is on for layover. Request approval of major amendment to the Special Use Permit to allow aviation services in the AV District with approval of a major amendment to the Special Use Permit to allow development in the ED North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District along with rezoning from DR and AV to AV. This was laid over from our December meeting. Location northeast of 72nd Street and Bennington Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Yes? Okay. Agenda Item Number Six will be removed from consent. Agenda Item Number Seven, Case C-8-22-321. Applicant Nick Brenner, Menard, Inc. It is on for approval. Request approval of a Special Use Permit to allow convenience storage in the CC District along with a waiver to Section 55-756E7 height limits to allow a 23-foot-tall building. This was laid over from our December meeting. Location northwest of 205th Street and Cumberland Drive. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Case C-10-23-13, C-10-23-14, C-12-23-15. Applicant WD Investments 10 LLC. It is on for layover. Request preliminary plat approval of Aerie at Blue Sage, a subdivision outside city limits with approval of a rezoning from AG to DR, R6 and R7 along with approval of an NCE Neighborhood Conservation and Enhancement District. Location southwest of 204th and Blue Sage Parkway. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Case C-10-12-134, C-10-23-3, C-10-23-4, C-7-10-62. Applicant Rochelle Roofs, Marion High School. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the Conditional Use Permit to allow secondary education facilities in the R2 District with rezoning from CC, R8, and R2 to R2 along with expansion of the MCC Overlay District and repeal of the ACI Overlay District for a portion of the site. Location northeast of Military Avenue and Aurora Drive. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Case C-10-23-5. Applicant Midwest Fidelity Partners LLC. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GO to CC. Property is located within an ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location 3131 South 72nd Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Case C-10-23-6. Applicant Matthew L. Andrus. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from DR and R1 to R1. Property is located within an ED Environmental Resources Overlay District. Location 7116 and 7126 Northland Drive. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Case C-10-23-10. Applicant Tim King. It is on for approval. Request approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location 3711 North 90th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Case C-8-23-2. Applicant Martha Benavides. It is on for layover. Request approval of a Special Use Permit to allow indoor entertainment in the HI District. Location northwest and southwest of 20th and Dorcas Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eighteen, Case C-10-23-16, C-8-23-17. Applicant Onyx Properties. It is on for approval. Request approval of a Special Use Permit to allow custom manufacturing in the CC District with approval of the ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location 1111 Papillion Parkway. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, Case C-7-23-7. Applicant AJAC, Inc., or AJAK, Inc. It is on for approval. Request approval of a Conditional Use Permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC District. Location 19295 Grant Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty, Case C-7-23-20. Applicant Dr. Luke Burglin. It is on for layover. Request approval of a Conditional Use Permit to allow automotive repair services in the CC District. Location 4910 Al Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Those are the consent agenda items. Do we have a motion for those consent items on for approval?
Motion to approve Agenda Items Number Fourteen.
Three, five, seven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, and nineteen.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
I do have to recuse myself from Case Number Fourteen. All others, yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six-zero.
Okay, do we have a motion for the consent items on for layover?
Motion to layover, Case Number Two, twelve, seventeen, and twenty.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six-zero.
Okay, those items that were on consent, no further action will be taken today. Martha, if you were, I was gonna let you know that your case is no further action today. You're welcome to leave, or you're welcome to stay. It's up to you, so. Thank you for coming down. We'll get started with our regular agenda. We have Case One and Four will be taken together. Case One and Agenda Item Number One, C-3-22-309. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the River Place Rose Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan. This was laid over from the December meeting. Location 520 Riverfront Plaza. And Agenda Item Number Four, Case C-12-4-89. Applicant Larry Jensen, River Place Rose LLC. Request approval of a major amendment to the Mixed Use Development Agreement for River Front Place. This was laid over from the December meeting. Location 520 Riverfront Plaza. Is Larry here? We'll get started with, we're gonna start with Case Four, so.
Alex Jensen in place of Larry Jensen with Milestone Development, the developer of River Place LLC. So our plan here, we requested layover at the last meeting just to have one more meeting with the neighborhood, the condo association for the Riverfront Towers, and we've since worked everything out, and they think they are here in support. We also met with Gallup to get their approval since they do have a say in what goes on this lot. The plan here is for a 17-unit condo building, for sale housing. It's five stories in total, garage podium plus four with the garage on the main level, and then 17 units above. Floors two and three are one-story condos, and then floors four and five are actually two-story units, each with their own rooftop access. There've been, we've been working on this lot for about two, this concept for about two years now, and we have a plan that we think is a real benefit to the Riverfront in downtown Omaha. There are significant challenges on this lot. There's easements that run through in several directions on the lot that kind of altered the footprint of this building, and the soil conditions, there's, from the industrial past of the, or history of the lots, there's a lot of fill and then contaminated soils that require ground improvements, considerable expense, the geopiers that will go down about 30 to 40 feet to stabilize the structure of the building, and there's contaminated soils as well. So everything that we've had to, everything that's been discussed has been run through by the Nebraska Department of Environment and Energy to approve even every digging, any soil that comes out of the ground will have to go to hazardous waste facilities, and then stabilization of the structure was altered by the soil conditions as well. And then we're at the proximity of the levee. We've had to work with Army Corps of Engineers, and we've got to submit all, we've had meetings with them, so we think we have a good direction. So we're gonna submit this month to start that approval process as well. So yeah, I think we have 34 parking stalls in the garage here, and then there will be 11 off-street, five here, and then six will be actually added on this side over here as well, just to alleviate any concerns of parking in the neighborhood from Riverfront condo owners.
Okay, thank you. Before I ask for any other proponents, Don, did you want to come up and present Agenda Item Number One with this?
Oh yeah, thank you. Just kinda get oriented a little bit. Here's the Bob Carey Pedestrian Bridge. Oh yeah, Alex covered things pretty well. It's been a very complicated site, heavily encumbered with a lot of development constraints, and they've worked well with the city for quite some time to get to this point. Total project investment in the core area of the city is $11.7 million with this project. They're requesting $2,22,260 in Tiff support. Note that the project is located in the Urban Core Housing and Mobility Plan area, so a portion of their Tiff proceeds will go towards the Housing and Mobility Plan, the streetcar system basically. And it's also located in an extremely blighted area, which allows them a 20-year Tiff term. Project meets the criteria for our Tiff program. It's an appropriate land use for the area, complies with the goals of our city's master plan, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
My name is John Branstadter. I live at Riverfront Plaza, 555, and I'm the President of the Riverfront Condominium Association. Thank you for the layover, and you gave us a chance to really have a wonderful conversation with a developer. I believe that you all have notes from those meetings in front of you. It was very important that we have the meeting, and this lot has been very challenging, as those of us who've lived there for a long time, many developers, many of them that you know, have looked at this lot and have had to back away. This is a solid project, and is probably the best that can be done on this land, being so challenged that it is. So we're here to say, one, thank you for the time. We hope our notes make it into the public record, and we're here to say we're happy to have this, and we hope that you approve it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the Board? Eric, did you want to add?
You know, just brief mention, we continue to work with the development team on the building materials and finalization of those with the mixed-use amendment in Item Number Four. We will take separate recommendations and votes, so unless there are questions from the Board or further commentary, staff recommends approval of Case Agenda Item Number One for approval.
Motion to approve. We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six-zero.
For Agenda Item Number Four, staff recommends approval of major amendment to the Mixed Use Development Agreement for Riverfront Place, subject to five acceptable mixed-use development agreements prior to City Council.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the major amendment to the Mixed Use District Development Agreement for Riverfront Place, subject to submission of five acceptable signed copies of the amendment prior to forwarding the request to City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six-zero.
Okay, moving on. Agenda Item Number Six was on for consent. It has been removed. It's Case C-10-22-319, C-8-3-89, C-8-22-320. Applicant Patrick Ackerman. Request approval of a major amendment to the Special Use Permit to allow aviation services in the AV District with approval of a major amendment to the Special Use Permit to allow development in the ED North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District along with rezoning from DR and AV to AV. This was laid over from the December meeting. Location northeast of 72nd Street and Bennington Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, thank you. I'm Pat Ackerman, owner of the North Omaha Airport, 11901 North 72nd Street. Thank you guys for the time. I'm here to present on the plan for the North Omaha Airport revitalization plan that we have. A couple of things I want to just note in terms of why the change is needed here at the airport. One is the airport's unsustainable in terms of revenue and costs there at the airport. Used to be the place to hang out and fly and learn to fly, but over the decades, it's really degraded in terms of the facilities, in terms of what's available there at the airport. Secondly, we believe there's an area of opportunity in leisure aviation to provide some services and facilities that don't exist in the leisure aviation space, specifically areas where people are looking to seek new places to fly and ease of use of getting up in the air and flying someplace fun to fly. In terms of why, the way we looked at this project is three things. One is sustainability of the airport. We believe it to be an airport. We believe longer-term asset of the city of Omaha as an airport, and we believe it to be, needs to be sustainable as an airport. Second is growth. We need more, we need more activity at the airfield, like kind of a basic community to fly in and out of there to keep it sustainable and growing, and then longer-term services that could be offered to the aviation community in terms of maybe AMP flight mechanic, flight school, things of those nature. And then in terms of pilots in the leisure aviation space, we believe that there's significant friction in leisure aviation space. As I mentioned before, if you try to fly somewhere brand-new, there's five big things in your way. One is, is my plane gonna sit out overnight? Most places you fly, trying to find a place to put your plane inside, it's really hard to do. Second is, where do I stay when I fly somewhere new? A lot of places people fly to are their second home, or places that would be for, maybe a relative or somebody that they know. If you're looking to fly somewhere brand-new, it's hard to know exactly where am I gonna stay without doing a lot of research and logistical. Third is transportation. Is there a car available to get to and from the airport, to the facilities I'm gonna be looking at? Fourth is, what am I gonna do in the area? If I'm brand-new to the area, I've never flown into that area, kind of figuring out what restaurants and events and things to do in that area. We believe there's an opportunity to be more succinct and better for pilots there. Lastly, is itinerary planning. If you think about most FBOs around the country, and even the city of Omaha, most of them are focused on fuel transfer, fuel transactions. They're looking to get units to land there and to buy fuel from them, and that's their source of revenue. And I would believe at North Omaha Airport, we can actually create more of a destination and make it easy for people to transfer, to fly into the city of Omaha and experience what the city has to offer. The solution that we put forth thus far has about six items in it, includes a runway extension to the north, hangar building to, for some displaced hangers that we are, have to move with the Aviators Hotel that we're adding, the Aviators Hotel, which is the long building there on the southeast corner, some expansion of the operations building there, and a few other kind of logistical things, perimeter fencing, some fuel station upgrades, a plane parking, things of those natures. Just quickly looking at the site, you'll see just on the north side, there's the runway extension to the north. Really, it's for safety purposes, no expansion of the airspace. It's really for landings to the, to the south and taking offs to, or landings to the north and taking offs, people taking off to the south. And then they have the nine-hanger buildings there on the, off of 72nd Street that will be added. For the side, to the south, we have the new Aviators Building there that goes in the southeast corner as submitted, and then the operations building expansion you have there, and then some showing of the site fencing there. The initial plan that we submitted to you guys back in November for the December hearing that we got, took a layover for, the initial design was to have planes on both sides, both the east and the west of the hangers, and you would essentially have the rooms embedded between the planes. Based on feedback we got from not only the neighborhood meetings that we had and the city of Omaha, we thought that we could enhance that much more, and which is what we did with the Seminole this time. The redesign change actually removed the planes that would then taxi around the back, and we'd separated the rooms completely, which we, actually gave us a much better operational design, and so the planes would just come out on the taxiway and go straight onto the runway, and then the rooms would be completely separated with a corridor and a room to go between the clubhouse that we have designed at the facility. Same thing on the Aviators Hotel, the clubhouse portion of it, which was initially to have a restaurant, kind of a cocktail bar, some golf simulators, a lounge space. Again, thinking about more of the country club style that we're trying to put for aviators was pretty limited based on their initial design. The new design we submitted actually had a lot of expansion of amenities in that space because we have more area to do so, and with, based on feedback we got in the pilots' community and other neighbors, the additional amenities adds more to the membership model we're looking to deploy there at the airport. Through discussion so far, we've had great dialogue with the City of Omaha Planning Department, and we've had four meetings with them over the last year, and just have gotten great feedback on the project overall. I've also had a couple of good meetings with the Nebraska Department of Aeronautics Division, which they've been very encouraging and supportive of the project and believe that the membership model works very well for a private airport on the north side of Omaha. We also engaged neighbors really well. We had a public meeting in November 30th, at which we had 80 people. That lasted over an hour and a half and had good dialogue and good feedback we got from them. I've also personally met with about 50% of those within 300 feet. I've also personally met with about fifty percent of those within three hundred feet around the airfield, and again, largely supportive, but there are some that have been a little bit concerned with what we put forth. We've of course made a lot of design changes in the latest seminal, and we believe that a lot of our communication with them has continued to get better, and overall, we think the plan has been improved tremendously based on that. Hotel operations, as I mentioned before, will be a membership model only for the aviators community, people flying and coming, and those that are in the city of Omaha that are in the aviation community. The restaurant, cocktail bar, lounge amenities, six AM to midnight, alcohol, B-12 to midnight as well. Hotel parking as designed in the seminal was to have parking next to the hotel for members and guests, and then we occasionally would have member fly-ins, events, and those kind of things that would happen with overflow parking on the west side of the airstrip. Just a couple of quick photos around the amenities that were looked into offer, golf simulators, to have a lot of different things you could do on them, the virtual putting area, kind of a laser shot, again, kind of adding a tool chest of things that people would be very attracted to come and spend time at the airport and further their aviation career. We've also added the spa feature on the latest design, which is meant to be more for the spouses that are flying, and a lot of the pilots are actually male, and so we think this is a great added benefit for membership there as well. The conceptual view there, again, one-story, hangers facing to the west, and then living quarters back towards the east side of the building with the clubhouse centered directly in the middle of the facility. There's one kind of main outstanding concern in the latest report from the city, which was specifically the ten-foot setback we had put in the seminal. The request is to have a thirty-foot setback. So if you see in their design here, there was a ten-foot setback, with then a forty-two foot drive for the parking on the backside, and then there was retaining walls around the corners and along the north end of the airfield, and that was a concern from the city. And specifically, not that the aviation zoning has a setback requirement, but really the concern was the unintended consequence for the neighbor there to the east. We did bring a proposed solution to that today, which was actually to take the parking underground at the facility and allow for the thirty-foot buffer yard. Since the parking was in that thirty-foot buffer yard, we have the ability now to just take the driving, the drive off of Bennington Road, and we'll just go right underneath the facility to provide the parking that we need for the Aviators Hotel. And so we believe that solves a number of issues that have been brought forth, not only from the city, but also from the neighborhood. We would move the building slightly as well. It would go further to the east and to the north, still respecting that thirty-foot buffer yard. Proposal would be a thirty-seven-foot buffer yard on the east and a thirty-five and a half, thirty-four, thirty-five point seven on the north end. It does also allow for additional landscaping, screening, and those kind of things. So just benefits of that that we brought here today, does comply with thirty-foot buffer yard, which is the last major concern of the project. There's a few other smaller ones in there we believe we can also do as well. Completely eliminates the plane and vehicle cross-traffic, which was a big concern along with the neighbors as we continue to meet with them. No longer needs retaining walls on the east or the north side of the facility, which again, would be beneficial to the property owners there, the east and to the north. And no longer a driveline along the property, and so we think this solution offers a viable solution to the concerns brought forth in the proposal. So that's my proposal, and I'll take any questions that those may have.
Thank you, Patrick. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, are there any opponents?
I'm a proponent.
You're a proponent?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Mark Farrell, and I live at one-twenty-four zero-four north Sixty-Ninth Street, right adjacent to the airport. I want to thank you for hearing this proposal. I'm a pilot, commercial-rated, instrument-rated, but it's never been my job. It's been more my application and a passion, more of a recreational flyer, and I just wanted to let you know that recreational flying, it's kind of a balance between just burning gas and finding a place to go. So the idea for the North Omaha Airport, I feel, will connect pilots with a very unique location, allowing to land with easy access to local activities of the city and any activities at the airport. And I believe this plan will help to revitalize an airport that has served Omaha for over seventy years. I'm very excited with the new ownership of the airport, doing things for the airport rather than the old owner taking away from that. Anyway, thank you for listening.
Do you fly in and out of that airport yourself then?
Yes, sir.
How often do you fly?
As much as my wife lets me. A lot, quite a lot, yes. Yep. Yeah, I've flown in and out of that airport for actually over thirty years. In the heyday, when it was owned by the Benassi's, a long, long time ago, it was the place to go. There was a lot of activity, there were gliders there, which now, a lot of that has moved to Blair, those folks have kind of moved on. But, you know, there's a social aspect to aviation. You know, it's not going to the bar and drinking, but having a lounge there, it just kind of gives people that are going to fly in something to do after the flying is over, you know, kind of like playing golf, not with the beer in the cart, but after the golf game, going to the clubhouse. So I think it's a great idea for the airport and for the city, because the city tourism board can list it on their site, and just think of the people that would respond to it. I'm a member of AOPA, which is the Airline Owners and Pilots Association. There's a third of a million members in that organization. You know, just a little note in the magazine of what's going on is going to be incredible. I'm also the state ambassador for the Recreational Aviation Foundation, which is a national organization that promotes airports, private airports basically, for public use for recreational activities, and this fits the bill for that as well. So, thank you.
Does this model exist at other similar-sized airports that you've been to around the region or country, or?
It's rare that this type of an activity or this type of the hangar hotels is not the norm, but it's, I think it is an advantage for general aviation to have this, because it does everything. Not only can you fly in somewhere, you can stay there, your plane's protected, you have something to do while you're there, you can visit the other activities. I mean, I just envision people coming, you know, for like the College World Series or a golf tournament, just more people staying, more things to do. It's just, it's a win-win. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other proponents? Okay, seeing none, are there any opponents?
Thank you. My name is Stephen Scherr, S-D-E-P-H-E-N-S-C-A-G-R-R. I represent myself and my wife Jan at this point, asking that the court consider the recommendation for layover.
Can we give you your address?
I'm sorry, six-nine-three-four Northland Drive. And we are to locate it directly to the north of the end of the airport runway, approximately a half a mile, I would say. We're impacted, we aren't within the three-hundred-foot jurisdiction, but we are impacted by the nearness we are, the location, to the airport itself and to the runway. We'd support the recommendation of layover for a couple of reasons. First of all, it is a new plan, and this is not the plan that was discussed at the information meeting on November thirtieth, which we attended. And for that reason alone, I think there's cause for, to give the residents of the area an opportunity to look at the new plan and how it may affect its neighbors in a way that it may not have in the first plan. Secondly, I don't think that there's adequate consideration has been given to what a major change this is. It's called a major amendment, and this airport was created, as I understand it, seventy-five years ago, soon after World War Two, and it's, the plan, the amendment, is to, it seems to us, to dramatically extend and the scope of the airport and the use of the airport, and presumably, the activity of airplanes and everything else around that area. That area has gone from completely rural after World War Two. Again, I'm going by hearsay, but as far as I know, from what I've heard from people who know, there were six dairy farms in that area to the north of the airport, which is now the residential almost entirely. And now, as you know, it's surrounded by literally hundreds of personal residences within a mile or mile and a half, whatever a useful measure is for considering safety factors and noise and things of that kind. We have a very specific interest, and that is that our residence is located on Deer Creek, on Northland Avenue, on Deer Creek, and the runoff attention, or the attention to the runoff issue, we think is extremely important, and we had a personal experience of that. Our property abuts to Deer Creek, which runs northward from the airport, and we had a, well, the creek collapsed. Now, I understand that when we buy the property as the airport was, we accept whatever hazards there were in relation to what it was when we bought it. But if there's a significant expansion of the use of the airport, we are particularly concerned about runoff. Now, I know that I've reviewed the records and the proposals of the runoff for dealing with water runoff. There will, it seems to me, just speaking from common sense, there will be more runoff than there has been because of the increase in concrete and some extension of the runway and so on. But we are particularly affected by what is called in the report, point-five runoff, and that is the water that comes down from the northeast corner of the airport and drains down to what becomes, I understand, Deer Creek on Northland Drive. And our personal experience was that the creek bank on our side collapsed, and that disaster was not covered either by our real estate insurance or by the flood insurance which we had, and it cost us a mere a hundred and six thousand dollars to put a hundred and ten large truckloads of riprap behind our house and have it put in place in a way that restored the bank, and I hope for a long time to come. But in any case, I think that is just an example of what runoff can do. The creek itself is, as I understand, almost entirely fed by spring water, except for storm runoff, and it's only, the water weighs only two to three feet wide. But we have seen it when it gets as much as fifteen feet wide, and really becomes a torrent when you have a heavy thunderstorm. So it's not an imaginary concern, and for our particular purposes, I want some confirmation from your office that the calculations of the amount of runoff and the effect on the creek and the area drained by the creek is adequate for the protection that I think is required now that the use of the airport is being expanded. So both because of the amendment that's now proposed to the original amendment, and because of the, I don't think that the impact of this modification has been adequately considered in terms of what the airport was originally, five or six dairy farms, to now a place surrounded by hundreds of personal residences, and for our particular concern about the runoff issues. And I appreciate you considering the recommendation to hold over, and thank you for your time.
Andrew Collins, attorney with Erickson-Cedarstrom Law Firm, one-zero-three-three-zero Regency Parkway Drive. Erickson-Cedarstrom represents the Irvington Volunteer Fire Department, which has a fire station on the property immediately north of the airport. And any members of this committee that were on the committee back in twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen timeframe, remember the wrangling that went on at the time the fire station was built, specifically surrounding runway protection zones, and the FAA and the State Aeronautical Commission's role in regulating and protecting those zones surrounding the runway of an airport like this one, or all runways generally within the state and within the country in the case of the FAA. My concerns, I would echo the concerns expressed just now concerning the environmental impacts, just the impact on the surrounding areas. Obviously, this commission's role is to consider the impact of the proposed project on the properties that surround it in considering whether to grant the amendment to the special use permit. Obviously, the impacts to the surrounding properties are going to be substantial with regard to a project like this, and specifically as it relates to the extension of the runway. I haven't seen, and I'm fairly new to the game here, but I haven't seen any representations or any certain description or assurances regarding what's going to become of the RPZ. As you all know, the runway protection zone was very important to the commission's consideration of the fire station's plans. Specifically, the fire station was required to change its plans in order to avoid occupying any portion of the runway protection zone. And it's not clear to me, logically, it makes sense to me that if the runway is being extended, the RPZ would be extended. That may not be the case, and that may have been what the proponent indicated during his presentation, but we don't have any assurances that the runway protection zone or the other impacts on the surrounding properties are going to be mitigated. Obviously, to the extent there is impact to the runway protection zone, I'd argue there's a taking. The government's action is going to impact not just the value, but the usability of the surrounding properties. And I would also question whether the proposed use, the proposed project is in keeping with the long-term plan for the city of Omaha. That's all I have at this time, unless there are questions.
Doug, I didn't know if you wanted Doug to come up or not.
Yeah, I'll have Doug come up and talk about the environmental stuff. That's ways outside of my zone. But to specifically address the RPZ, the extension of the runway is not an extension...
Name and address again.
Oh, I'm sorry. Patrick Ackerman, one-one-nine oh one, north Seventy-second Street, owner of the North Omaha Airport. Just to specifically address the RPZ zone, the runway extension is not an extension of the threshold, the runway threshold at the runway three-five, or one-seven, which does not change the RPZ zone. That stays the same as it's been in place for, since the amendment was approved back in ninety-nine or two thousand, whenever it was last approved. So no change to the RPZ zone or impact there of the properties there to the north. So I just want to state that, and then Doug, talk about the environmental piece of it.
Members of the board, Douglas Streason, one-zero-eight-three-six, Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Like a lot of the projects I've had before you, we've got to go through Public Works, this whole process of making sure we don't increase the runoff off the site above existing conditions currently. We're working through that. We've got some schematics of a detention facility to the east of the runway, a little ways north of the Aviators Hotel, that'll discharge southeast into the existing drainage way where that water's always run in the past. We will make similar design modifications to the site on the other sides of the property to make sure the kinds of things described by Mr. Scher do not happen as a result of this development. We've been through three or four meetings with planning thus far, and we've had initial discussions with Public Works in those regards. We'll continue to do that as we move through the process to get to where you guys are comfortable with what we're doing, meeting current regulations. So with that, I'd answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you, Doug. Patrick, would you come back up, please? Stephen mentioned new plan, wants time to look at it. You're on for layover. We'll probably vote for a layover, that's the recommendation. Are you planning on having another meeting? Are you planning on having another meeting with the neighbors?
I certainly can. When we did the resuminal, for those that left their email addresses, I've been in contact. I've sent them the updated plans and the revisions, so everybody could see them. I did note, because of the holidays, there was not a chance to get back together. I'm happy to meet with the neighbors again to go over any additional questions that they may have and review the plans.
Okay, you'll commit to having a meeting with them?
Yes, I will commit to doing that.
Thank you, Patrick.
You bet.
All right. Any additional comments, questions?
Pat, if I, Pat, if I could keep you up there, just a few questions. Obviously, in our conversations, and you know, we appreciate all the dialogue. There's been, you know, a lot of good productive meetings, and you know, we have definitely moved the needle and, you know, feel that we're getting closer. Appreciate the potential revision regarding the southeast and the buffer yard. So I'd like to see that. If you could just elaborate a little bit, so you would have fully underground, under the hangars and hotel units, basically, you're envisioning same width? You have drive aisle with 90-degree stalls?
Yeah, good question. So obviously, still kind of preliminarily looking at it, the hangars are 42-foot wide, which allows for 24-foot drive aisle with an 18-foot parking stall. And we could run that the entire length of the building. That is one option. The other option is to do part of it underneath the residential piece as well. It depends on fire codes and a few other building considerations we'd have to look at. But the plan would be to come in off the road directly into the building and then down, and then have the drive aisle on the, at least initially, on the hanger side underneath those.
Okay. You know, so we have talked about, both in the reports and conversations, just the concern in making sure that this is, this is a facility that is utilized by, you know, the flying community and not just open to the general public. That's not the intent. Obviously, these types of commercial and other types, similar uses, can be accessory to an aviation area. Of course, you think of it more traditional with your larger airports. They have restaurants and lounges and things like that, and of course, hotel space. This is obviously a little bit unique just because of the nature of this airport. So I believe that you're aware of, you know, staff has been concerned about making sure that's limited. The recommendation report talks about a reduction in parking to try to limit that to one parking stall per hotel unit and then one per employee. Just kind of while we're here discussing the project, I don't know if you had any thoughts on that or if your potential revisions make modification to the number of parking stalls or?
Yeah, I read the report, and it was 90 stalls. It was one per, one per room and 15 per staff. My only question or concern with that is if you have people in the aviation community, let's say based at Millard, Council of Love's or wherever, that want to come and use the facility as an amenity, right? Then we probably need a little bit more parking than just one per room, though I could argue that 90 is probably sufficient anyways. But, so I think we could, we have the potential to have more spaces underneath ground. Now, in terms of the final number of that, I think we can continue to dialogue around that. But the facility would allow the 90 that you, or 91 that you had called out for, with potentially a few others, if we decided we needed to, so.
Okay, just one last question. Obviously, you increased the size of the hotel from last time. Do you envision phasing this? I mean, can you elaborate a little bit on?
Sure.
Short-term, long-term plans?
Yeah, good question. We need the hangar space for sure. I mean, anywhere around the Omaha area, Council of Love's, there's just, there's a lack of hangar space in general. So the hangar space is needed for sure. In terms of the size and number of rooms, that was just what was left over based on the whole span. Now, it's 76 rooms. It allows me to build the north end with the clubhouse as a scaled model to start with, with expansion to the south. So that could be a potential option to look at, since it's a new model. And so we might decide to build all the hangars and maybe half the rooms as a starting point, and then decide to expand from there. Those are, those are things that we would look at from a financial and phasing standpoint. And the additional rooms allow us the ability to do that feasibly.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Any other questions? Appreciate the time, thank you.
Any additional comments from the board? Eric, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I do. Obviously, there was a lot of revisions with the resuminal. We appreciate that, and we're, you know, moving closer. And of course, with the potential solution to account for that 30-foot buffer yard that staff feels is important. You know, if you had a traditional commercial zoning or commercial use such as, you know, hotel, there would be a typical 30-foot setback in buffer yard. So that's why we do feel it is important. You know, our staff report talks about modifying the building size and parking. But, you know, the underground parking could be, it could be a good solution. Now, we would have to look at how that impacts any of the environmental district overlay. So, you know, staff is still going to recommend layover. But we believe, you know, that this could probably be a pretty quick turnaround, you know, depending on the applicant's timeframe and what they were able to put together. The city has a consultant regarding aviation. It's a fairly complex portion of our code. So we do have a consultant, he's not able to be here today. But in conversations, my understanding is that the runway protection zone would not be impacted by the additional runway space. So I did just want to touch on that. Regarding city codes, if this does move forward in the future, there are multiple waivers from city code sections that would be required. There are previous waivers from the Zoning Board of Appeals on this site for previous development and additions that have happened. The city of Omaha zoning code is very restrictive as far as the distance from the runway and protection areas in different code sections. So, you know, our report does talk about that we would be acceptable to waiving certain provisions from those sections subject to compliance with state and FAA standards. So I did just want to mention that. Unless there's any further questions, staff would recommend layover. But, you know, we continue to look forward to working with the applicant and revise submitted plans and hopefully, you know, be able to move forward fairly quickly. Staff recommends layover.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sol Longo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, thank you. Agenda item number eight, case C-3-15-283. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha requests approval of amendment to the Uptown District TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, 522 South 30th Street, 522 Park Avenue, 909 to 918 South 30th Court, 825 Park Avenue, 1113 South 31st Street, and 1313 South 31st Street. And Don, you're up.
Yes, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. This project is a multi-phase for-sale townhome project. It was initially approved in 2015 and then amended in 2017. The developer has completed phases one and two for a total of 69 units. The current request is to eliminate phase three and phase four from the project. The developer feels the market has changed. Instead of doing for-sale townhome units, wishes to do apartment units, rentals. The phase three sites is comprised of three parcels. They're in the kind of teal here. These three would be removed as part of phase three. These two have been approved for a separate TIF project, the digs. This one is in the process of being worked on by the developer to come back to us for a new TIF project. The phase four sites, or the three yellow sites, two of these will be donated to In Common, a nonprofit entity. And this one on Park Avenue would be sold off. In a lot of ways, it's kind of a housekeeping item. And we'll see some more development from at least this site in the future. And we ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board? Eric, did you want to add?
Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Sol Longo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
Agenda item number nine, case C-3-22-232. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha requests approval of an amendment to the 5902 North 9th Street industrial TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, 5902 North 9th Street. And Don, you're up again.
Yeah, good afternoon, Don Seaton, once again, City Planning Department. This was approved by the planning board not very long ago. The project is coming back for an amendment. Basically, it's the same project, it's the same site by the airport, same use, which is a new construction flex space, one-story industrial building. Things that have changed is that the building that was approved at 160,000 square feet is going to be increased in size to 202, 404,000, 202,404 square feet. The amount of TIF that is being requested, tax increment financing support, has also been increased. They initially requested $3.2 million. They're requesting $3,750,000 with this project. Project cost, let me show you, also rendering of the building, renovation. Total project cost increased from $21.7 million that was initially approved to a project of $23.7 million now. This project is in an extremely blighted area. It meets the criteria for a 20-year TIF, and it's been reviewed by the TIF committee, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Brent Beller, 11440 West Center Road, on behalf of the applicant, Greenslake. Nothing really additional to add to Don. I will say, I think it's important to say thank you to Don and Bridget and Jennifer for helping us. There was a bit of a fast track to get this done at the end of the year, and I know everyone was busy. So we appreciate that. We're expanding this building. So with that, you know, our TIF eligible expenses went up a little bit and requesting additional. So here for any questions otherwise, though. Thank you.
Dave, did you have a question for Brent? Okay, all right, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. Additional comments, questions? Eric?
Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a, do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sol Longo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
Agenda item number 10, case C-3-23-10. Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha is the applicant, request approval of amendment to Chapter 55 zoning pertaining to urban agriculture. Location, city of Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. And Eric, you're up.
Yes, I'm pinch hitting. So before I go into what this amendment to the zoning code would be, I first want to say thank you to the two planners on staff that have done the vast majority and bulk of this work, and that is Tim Fries and Lisa Smith. Tim was going to present today at planning board, but he's not able to make it in. Lisa Smith is available, and I may call her up for certain questions or commentary if those arise during the public hearing. But I will give a brief summary of what this amendment does. So this is an amendment to Chapter 55 zoning regarding urban agriculture. And we're defining that as, kind of a summary, is the raising and harvesting of crops on property or within a building that was not originally zoned for agriculture use. This would allow agriculture to take place in portions of the city where the current zoning code either doesn't address it or prevents it. And the intent is also to provide a consistent set of standards, both for urban farmers and citizens. What this code amendment will not do is regulate properties with a house where individuals or families are growing food for their own consumption, such as your typical home garden that many of us have in this community. These regulations are not changing those. It will regulate vacant lots where individuals or families are growing food for their own consumption or for sale or donation. And it will regulate properties with a house where individuals or families are growing food for sale or donation. This code amendment adds four use types, and those range in intensity and vary across our different zoning districts in our city and jurisdiction. Those four new use types would be community garden, urban garden, urban farm, and commercial farm. Not to get into all of the details, but a brief summary. A community garden, I think we all kind of know what that is, and we have those currently in place throughout the city. It just isn't accounted for in the zoning code. So this basically does that. And community gardens are crops mainly for personal consumption by multiple individuals, crops grown only outdoors or in temporary agricultural structures and then permitted in all zoning districts. Next, you have the urban garden, which would be crops for off-site sale or personal consumption on vacant lots. These are crops primarily grown outdoors or in temporary agricultural structures. There can be permanent agricultural structures on sites with a primary residence, but limited to a 10% site area of the property. This would be permitted in all residential zoning districts. Next up, an intensity would be urban farm, which is similar to urban garden with some additional criteria. It would allow onsite sales with certain criteria and a specific number of dates allowed in a one given month. It would also allow permanent agricultural structures were not allowed. And because it is more intensive and it has potential onsite sales or it is on a vacant lot with permanent structures, it would require a conditional use permit in all residential districts. So that would allow for a public hearing, and, you know, similar to our meeting today, that would require approval by the planning board. And then the most intensive is commercial farm. And this is more geared for your office, commercial, industrial, or mixed-use zoning districts, your more intensive indoor operations, hydroponics, things like that. So I did want to just touch, the code differentiates between temporary and permanent agricultural structures. The difference of those is a temporary agricultural structure, such as a hoop house or potentially a smaller greenhouse, would be onsite no more than 180 days. That timeframe was chosen because that aligns with the requirements in the building code for a temporary structure. Permanent structure would be for a duration of longer than 180 days. So with urban garden, urban farm, you do have some differentiation and some different criteria, but I did want to point that out. Not to elaborate too much further on the specifics, and we can always circle back if there are questions from the board or the public, but this code amendment would also address composting, parking, registry for growers, operating hours, signage, and the like. I think I'll leave it at that. Tim was able to present to the planning board in the pre-meeting, so that was a detailed conversation with a lot of nice exhibits and conversation that we had. So I guess I will leave it at that, but have the right to respond accordingly later.
Okay. Any other proponents wishing to speak? We got quite a few, it looks like.
Hi, I'm Ken Beckman, 1306 North 97th Circle, here just representing myself. Appreciate the opportunity to speak this morning with you and also today. I'm generally in support of this amendment, but I just do have some concerns relating to its effect on individuals such as myself that are just growing for personal use, so not, not doing it for commercial purposes or anything like that. And so as background, I have a vacant property, and because it is vacant, it falls under these requirements. Whereas if I were to grow the same amount of food on my personal residence, I would not be subject to this. And so my concern is not only for myself, but others in the community who see vacant lots, such as I did, that may be in less desirable condition, and then purchase those lots and want to improve them and grow food for their own family. They could potentially be discouraged from purchasing a vacant lot with these restrictions. And just briefly, specifically, my concerns are, with these restrictions, one, growing for personal use only on a vacant lot would be limited to 100 square feet accessory structure such as a shed. feet accessory structure such as a shed. And, uh, in, in my situation, I feel that that's, uh, a little bit too small to accommodate the materials that would be needed to effectively, uh, you know, operate my, uh, property. And so I, I would, uh, suggest that something in the neighborhood of two-hundred, uh, square feet might be more appropriate. Again, if I'm growing on my personal residence, I could have a shed up to seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, so that's, that's kind of the distinction there. Uh, the second area is compost. Um, again, on this vacant lot, I can only use compostable materials that are generated on that lot. I can't bring in a little bit from my neighbors and things like that, so that material's going to go to the landfill. Um, but again, if, on my personal residence, I could bring in those outside materials. I, I would suggest that, um, you know, obviously, we don't want heavy machinery and people dumping on, on vacant lots. That's, that's not what we want at all, but I would, I would suggest maybe a possible amendment of letting the property owner, uh, bring their own compost from maybe their residents or a few neighbors with their own vehicle, not a commercial vehicle, but if they can bring it in on their own, uh, that might be a reasonable, uh, compromise. And then finally, there's a provision in the, uh, proposed amendment that says, uh, property owners, uh, can only be on their property between five AM and ten PM. So if I want to go, you know, harvest a strawberry at midnight, technically, I, I'm not, uh, I'm not allowed to do that under these, uh, these new proposals. So, again, I appreciate, uh, you know, the, the city's bringing this, uh, forward and very much in support of, uh, urban agriculture. I would just hope that, uh, you know, some of these adjustments could be made and I think it will really, uh, improve the proposal, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken.
Good afternoon, my name is John Porter, seven-eight-one-two Jackson Street. Uh, I'm here on behalf of myself, but also as, uh, the urban agriculture educator, uh, for Uni- University of Nebraska-Lincoln, uh, Extension Service, uh, and also the statewide program leader for our horticulture program. Um, I actually, uh, also served on the committee that assisted, uh, Lisa and Tim with, uh, coming together with, uh, this proposed, um, uh, ordinance, uh, and I'm here in support of it. I think, uh, as the previous speaker pointed out, there are some limitations. I think it was a compromise between totally, you know, supporting producers and also within city code, and that was part of, of my role and several other folks' role, actually providing education on what agriculture, urban agriculture is and, and how it operates. Uh, and I think thinking about, you know, what the potential benefits of, of this are, uh, you know, looking back through the, the, the pandemic and the food shortages we had, having the resilience to be able to have neighborhoods produce their own food, to bring equity to neighborhoods that don't have food access, uh, with grocery stores and, and other items like that. Uh, and, you know, we, we think about, um, you know, one of the things that I think about in my job is that resilience of the climate, uh, as we're coming in. Um, you know, we mentioned hydroponics, you know, bringing in those types of technologies to allow us to produce food to feed ourselves in the future, no matter what it looks like outside. Uh, and so I think this will put us on, uh, a path forward to really, uh, look at the future of the, the food that we grow and that we eat here in the Omaha area, because if you think about it, uh, Nebraska, uh, feeds the world, but we don't feed ourselves. We only pr- eat, uh, like ten percent, uh, of what we eat is actually grown in Nebraska, and we need to move the needle on that. And I think this amendment is a good start for that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other proponents?
Hello, uh, my name's Aaron French, four-zero-zero-two Seward Street, here representing City Sprouts, um, also in support of this proposed amendment. Uh, I'll keep it quick, really just want to thank Tim and Lisa and all the folks at Planning for all the really great work they did engaging with the urban ag community. Um, they were out there talking with farmers, talking with nonprofits continually, hearing, uh, concerns, coming back to us with revisions, and as the two previous proponents have said, might not have had everything that we wanted in there, definitely still some limitations, but I think on behalf of City Sprouts, we're really appreciative of how, uh, how much they heard our concerns, so, support it. Appreciate it, y'all.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon, my name's Mark Brandon, sixty-nine fifteen Evan Street, uh, owner of Benson Bounty LLC. Um, my wife and I, uh, own and operate an urban farm here in Omaha, on an acre and a half, so we have been among those operating in a gray zone. Um, and so I, I first and foremost would like to say thank you to Lisa Smith and Tim Fries, who have done a fantastic job throughout this entire drawn-out process. I'd just like to echo, uh, what the previous speakers have said, um, it's not a perfect ordinance, um, there's some stuff in there I disagree with, but it's a step forward, um, a, a good first step. So, thank you, but, thank you, Lisa, thank you, Tim, and thank you to the Planning Board.
We got another one, another proponent?
Good afternoon, my name is Susan Whitfield for forty-fifty-one Paxton Boulevard. I serve as a facility manager for No More Empty Pots, and I also have been a part of this three-year journey of, uh, serving on the committee to put this ordinance, uh, together. I believe it's something, it's, it's a beginning, it certainly has some limitations, but we didn't have nothing before. So now that we have at least a guideline, I think it's going to be very supportive and helpful for those who are interested in having an urban, um, farming or garden, whereas before, those things didn't exist, and it created problems and a lot of discussion, um, with the city wide. So I thank Lisa and Tim and their efforts to, um, soldier and bring this ordinance to you for a vote, and, um, we hope that you guys will be generous in your vote to support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, up, come ahead.
Hello, uh, my name is Gus Von Rowan, at forty-eight seventy-one Northwest Radial Highway. Uh, I am here, uh, speaking on behalf and proponent of this, uh, ordinance. Uh, I definitely want to just, uh, reiterate how much we appreciate Tim and Lisa's efforts to kind of bring this forward, and I really love what Susan just mentioned. Before this, we didn't really have anything, and I represented an organization called Omaha Permaculture, where we're working on vacant properties to turn them into community gardens. Uh, I feel like in the past, we've been working around not having anything, and now having something and having a guide plan is, is refreshing, so, thank you so much for everybody's work on this, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Gus. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close. No? Okay, I thought you were. Mark?
Yeah, I just have one question, I forgot to.
Okay, come on down.
Thanks for your time.
You bet.
You have to hear your name again, though. Sure.
Mark Brandon, sixty-nine fifteen Evan Street. Uh, one thing I, I, uh, I think was left unresolved for me was, um, with the new stipulations of, of permanent building, um, temporary building, um, or basically, as, uh, we, I will have to go through the conditional use permit because we're one of the more intensive urban farms, um, but as our operation currently stands, I can tell you, we, we don't, um, we're not in compliance with everything that, um, basically the setback rules, right? Uh, we have a high tunnel, and so it was built, it was not built, um, as if it was a permanent building, because at that time, when I approached the Planning Department seven years ago, uh, as they looked in the International Building Code, uh, they read into it that, the way, the way they read into it at that point, it wasn't, I did not need to go through the permitting process. So basically, just asking about our, um, us, as well as anybody else that might be affected, who, um, like, is, is there going to be some sort of grandfather clause if we don't, if we're not in compliance, or am I going to have to take that building down?
Okay, thank you, Mark.
So I would, yeah, thank you very much.
All right. I don't think there are any, but I'll ask you, are there any opponents? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Um, I have a question, Eric, and maybe you can answer it, or Lisa can. Um, since Ken Beckman came to our pre-meeting, how did we arrive at the, the, the ten-by-ten, the hundred-square-foot, uh, wouldn't have to be ten-by-ten, but the hundred-square-foot building for? Go ahead.
Well, yeah, so, and to elaborate beyond that, just very specific question, um, you know, writing code is difficult for a two-hundred-plus-square-mile jurisdiction. You are factoring in small residential lots, you are factoring in acreage residential lots, so there's, there's, there's never a simple one catch-all solution for any code that we write. And so, um, yeah, you know, there was some, some commentary and jokes about two-to-three-year timeframe, yeah, you know, I laugh because, yes, it, it does take time and, um, you know, we've had a lot of internal conversations and obviously, Tim and Lisa have been on the forefront with, you know, many who spoke today and many others out there in the community. And, you know, they take that information back and we meet internally with the director and myself and other members of planning and other members of, you know, city staff and, um, you know, so, how we came to the hundred square feet, I don't, I can't give you that specific answer, um, but it's a conversation, you know, ongoing, and part of it plays into just trying to predict, okay, you know, if you have a vacant lot, you know, what if it's four-thousand square feet and, you know, what is acceptable, but how does that compare to a forty-thousand-square-foot lot? And so sometimes when you're limiting to square footages or percentages, you know, i- i- it is a challenge. Um, I can say that if, if there's a vacant lot right now, there is no accessory structure that is allowed, so you can't have a, you're not supposed to have a shed, you're not supposed to have a detached garage, the zoning code does not allow that. Though, yes, obviously, this is, um, you know, allowing a certain structure. Now, you do always have, if you want to exceed that, you can always get a conditional use permit, which would jump it up from an urban garden to an urban farm. Um, you know, so there are options, there, um, you know, when we look at a code, we try to get it right from the get-go, um, not going to say that we'll, you know, one-hundred-percent perfect, but of course, we'll continue to analyze it and if there's issues or if there's, you know, repeated zoning Board of Appeals waivers request, or if there's, if, if we identify challenges, you know, maybe that means that we need to relook at a certain section. So, um, you know, we definitely do that with just all of our code sections in zoning. I don't know, that was kind of elaborate answer.
Yeah, that, no, it's a good answer, so, like, somebody like Ken Beckman could come, apply for a conditional use permit if he wanted to put up a two-hundred-square-foot building, go through the process, and.
Yeah, and, and.
Same thing with Mark.
Well, and.
With an existing building.
Well, and I'll touch on the grandfathering here, here in a moment. Um, the accessory structure, um, when I look at it, it doesn't restrict it to one accessory structure, so you could, um, have multiple accessory structures. Now, is that the most efficient? Perhaps not, but, yeah, you could do the conditional use permit, or you could seek a waiver from the zoning Board of Appeals of that code section. Uh, regarding the non-conforming structure that Mark had asked about or grandfathering, um, you know, it, when you're going from a use or an operation that's currently not allowed to, to one that is, um, you know, we're not going to go out and proactively seek out these buildings. If, you know, we haven't heard about it, we haven't had enforcement come out and check, we operate on a complaint basis, um, I guess that's kind of where I would stand now, so no, I'm not, you know, staff doesn't plan, I can go into Mark's property and say, you got to move that or take that down, um, you know.
I'm going to have to submit a site plan, correct?
Just a second.
Sorry, excuse me.
So, you know, and, and not to get bogged down with a site-by-site basis here, because, you know, I don't have the information on each individual sites, whether it's Mark's property or Ken's property, but, um, you know, we are willing to work with them if they have concerns about what their next steps are to make sure that, you know, they can legitimize what they've been doing, you know, I guess we'd have to take that on a one-on-one basis.
Okay, all right. Um, any additional comments, questions from the board?
I just have a, just a curiosity question. So Boystown, several years ago, had a kind of an urban farm operation where they rented out some space. Could, could someone else or something like Boystown do that again under this ordinance?
Are they rent?
They're renting out.
I'm not familiar with the operation, and obviously, Boystown has their own jurisdiction, so I'm not familiar with what they've done. Are you saying?
They don't have it anymore, but.
They were renting out.
Just.
Plot space.
Plots, yeah, just one big parcel.
Basically, a community garden and they were leasing out.
Sections of it.
Sections, yeah. Um, yeah, I, I think, without knowing all the details, I mean, I think you could do something like that under a community garden, but there are limitations, of course.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Did you want to add any more, Eric?
No, obviously, there is a lot of history, there was a lot of public engagement, a lot of public meetings, um, you know, our recommendation report talks about that, we, we talked in the pre-meeting about a lot of that. This will need to go to city council, uh, so it is under final review with the Law Department to make sure, uh, they're comfortable with all the provisions, so, um, pending any, you know, minor tweaks between now and city council as a result of that law department review. Other than that, I, I just want to thank the individuals who came down and supported this effort, and staff recommends approval.
Ken, do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six-zero.
Thank you all for coming down, talking on that, really appreciate it. Lisa, thanks for all your work over the last few years. All right, moving on, agenda item number eleven, case C ten dash twenty-three dash eleven, C twelve dash twenty-three dash twelve. Applicant Falcone Land Development LLC requests preliminary platap approval of Magnolia Trails, a subdivision outside city limits with approval of a rezoning from AG to R to DR and R four. Location southeast of two-hundred-and-sixteenth and Fort Streets, and it looks like Brent, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brent Beller, one-one-four-zero, rest, West Center Road, on behalf of the applicant Falcone Land Development. With me today is Kevin Sassy, uh, the project engineer on this project. Uh, so, as you noted, so we're basically, we're living out here on, this is Fort Street to the north of us, this is two-hundred-and-sixteenth Street, you actually can just see Maple Street on the south edge. Falcone Land Development has basically, if you go north of Fort Street, um, based upon us being in front of you before, we probably have about six-hundred lots that we've been developing over there since, um, probably the last four years, so, we're gradually moving south. Um, this area, this land is actually owned by the Gotch family, they've owned it for quite a number of years, they've had it listed for sale, uh, for development, for, um, uh, single-family development, this is master plan for a single family. Not sure how much you're aware, but as you can see, there's a portion of their property, this has all been bought by the NRD, so dam site twelve would be the north here, um, and, you know, we hear it a lot as far as the development, our city and the master plan, but this is kind of the edge of the city as far as development goes. I know, um, the Moore family and there's another development that has, that has looked at developing east of, or west of here, but that's really it. Then you go down the ridge, down to the Elkhorn River Valley, um, so we're at the edge of our city as far as multifamily, I'm sorry, single-family development out in this area. So, um, with that, what's being proposed is a hundred-and-ninety-eight, uh, single-family homes, uh, this is two-hundred-and-sixteen, two-hundred-and-sixteenth Street here to the, to our west, um, this is Fort Street to the north, and then, as I mentioned, uh, Maple Street is further to the south. Um, this layout, the only thing, there's a little bit of complicated because we are, there's some floodway in here, and so, um, the first thing to point out is two-hundred-and-sixteenth Street, so the county is actually leading this project, so two-hundred-and-sixteenth Street will eventually kind of jog east and then back north and meander, and it cuts further to the north, once you get a little bit closer to Mount Michael, that's going to be a new improved three-lane highway right there. Um, our entrances for this project, and, and this is the, this piece of property right here is actually owned by a gentleman, Tim Reese, uh, we've been in contact with him, uh, when we initially prepared this plan back in November, and then I actually reached out yesterday just to make sure, because the one thing to keep in mind, and we're always sensitive, any developer that, that we represent is, when you have an acreage like this, I, I believe this acreage is just about ten acres, um, but effectively, we're developing around their home, that's been there for a number of years, and so we try to be sensitive to that, but the one thing we did here as we lay this out, you can kind of see, uh, Mr. Reese does not want us currently sell, and we never want to force him, but the one thing we. But the one thing we will need is this intersection, this is called Sunburst Avenue. This is the half-mile movement. So when we go and we lay our side out and we talk to Public Works, um, this is the full movement intersection. Now, there, um, this is complicated and the reason that it's here, and this is actually on Mr. Reese's ground. So there's either gonna be, uh, we'll have to acquire that just from an outright purchase, or if we can't confirm a price, then there's always the condemnation action, which we don't wanna go to. We'd rather just buy it, uh, for fair market value based upon the, the arms-length negotiation with him. But the reason we're going there is, number one, uh, that's the half-mile movement from Maple Street. Also, as you can see, Sunburst Ave, as this street was master planned, it's supposed to come down and connect right there. So if Mr. Reese was ever to develop his property, we're laying this out so that, um, his property would actually be benefited by the, the layout in the sense that this street connects, he's gonna have lots here, uh, lots over here. That's kind of our thought there. The other thing to keep in mind, um, and the reason that's being placed there is there's a pretty large culvert that exists. So here's two-hundred-sixteenth Street, this is Mr. Reese's farm stand. Our, our right-of-way for Sunburst is actually gonna come like this. Uh, that's probably too much, but something like that. And, and the reason we're doing that is right here and right here is an existing large culvert. To move that, we can't really move it because if you're gonna move it and move it south, this is a pretty steep drop-off. So, um, Kevin can confirm, but I believe that's fifteen, twenty feet down. And so we would have to replace and redo that entire culvert section. The other thing to keep in mind is, um, when the NRD does their development and, and this development to the west, the city always wants the full movement intersection. We don't want a T-intersection right here and another T-intersection right there. This being the half-mile, the idea would be that the full movement would be right there. And again, that's just, I mean, Mr. Haas probably can confirm, but I, and I don't wanna speak out of turn, but that's just where the full movement, uh, should be. And again, because of that existing culvert, we kind of have to put it on the north side versus moving it south 'cause we'll have to move that entire culvert, uh, and that would be a pretty expensive project to do that. So, um, other than that, uh, we're here for any questions. Like every, every other Falcone development, we like to get grading yet this year, uh, as soon as we get through the entitlement process. So we're here for any questions otherwise. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
I have copies for you guys.
You, we need you to turn that about a hundred-and-eighty degrees. So you have north sticking up, if you would.
Like this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Isn't that north, yeah, going up? That's helpful, thank you.
Right, okay. My name is Tim Reese and, uh, I own the ten acres that's in the, in this project area. This is what they're proposing they wanna buy from me, which he just described there. This crossover here is on two-hundred-sixteenth Street. It's a, it's a, uh, box culvert that they reinforced here a few years ago. The actual, the half-mile line is right here. And I, I don't wanna sell this, you know, because it's just, uh, we've been there since nineteen-eighty-six. I think there's other areas they can go across. They don't need to move that, that's part of two-hundred-sixteenth Street. What I would suggest is on this road, they talk, this is where they wanna come across. Why can't they come down this road and meet two-hundred-sixteenth Street? They have this whole area here, they have a quarter-mile plus that they could cross this creek that they talk about and, and not even mess with me. I mean, I wanna be a good neighbor. You know, I know development's coming, it's going all around me. There's a sewer line going through in front of my place right now, which I understand. But they don't need my piece of property to make this project work. You know, they can put a box culvert in access two-hundred-sixteenth Street without messing with me at all, in my opinion.
Tim, i- if, if they did, how does that line up with, uh, uh, on the west side of two-hundred-and-sixteen?
Well, this is, uh, Moore's property that he talked about right here. I think this D Street would line up just about straight across with the Moore's driveway. The other thing that's coming is...
That's just a driveway for now, a lane, somebody's lane for now.
Right, right. But the other thing that's going on in there, if I go to one more page here, excuse me. This dam that's going in, this Papua NRD dam, there's a development planned up here, from what I understand, there's thirty houses going on thirty acres. To get to that piece of property, they've been negotiating with the NRD to use this south driveway. Uh, this is a maintenance road for the Papua NRD to get to the dam and maintain everything. And from what I understand, that's how they're gonna get to this development up here. The way that road comes out down here, it just connects just south of my place again, about where Moore's driveway is. And it's just south of the half-mile line. So I really don't see why they need my property. You know, I, I really don't want traffic going right by my house, you know. I don't, it makes sense that it lines up. You know, we don't have three driveways, uh, just, uh, feet apart from each other. And, uh, it just looks like to me, uh, by coming through my property, they're gonna save a lot of money by not building a structure to the south. You know, it's coming down to the developer's gonna save a lot of money, it's gonna cost me twelve percent of my land. And I really don't want the traffic there. And there's options there for them to access two-hundred-sixteenth Street without bothering me. You know, I wanna be a good neighbor.
Uh, Tim, what about the grade change that Brent was talking about that was gonna take place on, right on the south side of your property?
I don't know anything about a grade change. I don't know, there is a flood plain through there, there's a sewer line going through there right now. But I, I missed that point on the grade change, I guess.
Okay. No, I, I was asking you if you were aware of, 'cause...
You know, I asked about it.
I'll bring, we'll bring Brent up then.
Yeah, I don't know what the grading plan is. You know, I, I've asked him if there's gonna be any retaining walls around my property, if they're gonna shave down the hills or something like that, 'cause there's a pretty good hill all the way around me down there. Uh, the other thing is, is where this hill is here, this is a big hill. And if you come down here, I'd hate to be that house down at the bottom of that hill, especially on a day like today. Uh, 'cause it's gonna be a, uh, you know, they could be sliding down that hill, it's a pretty good, pretty good hill.
You mean going from east to west?
Yep, heading to the west, 'cause they're gonna have to go down that hill and then make a right-hand turn. Whereas if they made that, the outlet right there, they would go right to two-hundred-sixteenth Street. I mean, that looks more, uh, feasible to me with a traffic flow and everything else that's going through there. 'Cause all the development that's happened back through here, this whole area back here is in houses right now, and they have to go all the way up to Fort Street, or I'm not sure how they get out of there. But once this gets put in, there's gonna be a lot of traffic flow from this area that will come out here or come out this way. So the traffic flow's really gonna increase. And I, I don't want that in front of my place, I guess. Uh, last thing I had, it's in your packet here, this is a letter I got from them on, uh, or an email September or November thirtieth, uh, where they said the city is requiring that, which I don't quite understand, that they need to acquire my property. And then I get a call from, uh, a lawyer yesterday that said, we need to acquire your land. And I said, I don't wanna sell. I told them that on the thirtieth, I said, I don't wanna sell my place, I don't wanna sell any land. And they said, well, uh, we'll have to use intimate domain if you don't wanna sell it. And I don't think that's right either. Any questions? I appreciate your time.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. Any other opponents wishing to speak?
Scott Moore, forty-five-fifty North two-hundred-sixteenth Street. Our family owns the hundred acres directly to the west. To clarify, I'm neither a proponent or an opponent. I'm more, um, just really concerned and we can have council come out and probably hopefully answer some questions. The main concern that I have is, um, historically, first of all, I don't want any neighbors, I see them coming. It's unfortunate, um, uh, by the way, my land is for sale. If you would like to entertain, uh, an offer, it won't be cheap. I know it's coming, it's happening. Thirty years ago, uh, I had eight neighbors and two square miles. Twenty-five years ago, I had eight neighbors and two square miles. Twenty years ago, same, fifteen years ago, same. Excluding Mount Michael's traffic, two-hundred-sixteenth Street that loops all the way around up to Mount Michael comes down, and what I call the river road is two-hundred-thirtieth, is the main, what appears to be the main, West Douglas County, uh, avenue for bikers on Saturdays and Sundays, joggers, walkers, horses, all the above. Um, the, uh, comment by council just now of a three-lane road is news to me, which is awesome. I talked to, uh, Dan Kudlech mid-last year and was finally able to even get a speed limit sign up. Now, of course, with the Mount Michael students, the speed limit to them is a minimum. Just to reiterate, that road is a very dangerous road. It has no shoulders. On the, the development side, which would be the east side of two-hundred-sixteenth Street, it's about a fifteen-foot drop. If your car went off there, we would not see it. It is a very dangerous road, so I'm glad that they're going to improve it. Um, one thing I would like the board to address, and this has nothing to do with Falcone's development, it has everything to do with development in general in that area. You're going to dump, and dumping's the wrong word, a lot of traffic on two-hundred-sixteenth Street. It's the main road, it goes to Highway sixty-four, which for the city people, that's Maple Street. It is a four-lane highway, there is no traffic light there. I have three eighteen-year-olds that go to school. It is a challenge on a daily basis to cross Maple Street to go east. Speaking with the city engineers, the county engineers, and obviously since a state highway, I would advocate for at least consideration of a traffic light there, and I know that's not the developer's job. I, it's unfortunate that we're in a position where the city and the county seem to lag behind in infrastructure to development. It, it, the developers wanna build, times to build, people are buying houses, and the infrastructure's lagging behind. It's not their fault, I'm not against this development. I know it's going to happen. Falcone's have an amazing track record of development. They're a great operator as lo- as so long as, uh, the other developers along that road. Excuse me. There is also going to be a grade school on two-hundred-sixteenth and Ida. I don't know if you've already approved it, it's my understanding the city or the Elkhorn Public Schools has already purchased that. So I am just advocating for consideration of the traffic in that area and what it does, because they're not gonna take Fort Street, they're not gonna take Ida Street, they're gonna take two-sixteenth to Maple. They go to Fremont Valley, Waterloo, that's the road. I am, once again, all for, you know, the development aspect of it. The, the engineering firms, the council, and the developer in and of themselves are, they know what they're doing. And the only thing that I would, uh, suggest is a strong consideration of the traffic and the amount of traffic that, uh, is going to be loaded on that road. And if it's been, uh, addressed with the city planning, county engineer, county road, Dan Kudlech, um, then all great. I just wanted to voice my concerns on, uh, the traffic, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Any other opponents? Okay, seeing none, close the public hearing. Brent, did you wanna come back up and address?
Sure. Brent Beller, one-one-four-four-zero West Center Road.
Did I, did I misunderstand you about the grade change?
It's not the grade, it's, it's how deep that ravine is. Mr. Reese was, was correct, it's, or maybe it was Scott that just mentioned it. It's about fifteen to twenty feet at times. So get, re, changing that culvert, uh... Moving that culvert, I mean, that's a pretty big expense. And so I, I, again, I don't wanna speak out of turn, I don't know if Ryan is here, but, um, part of our discussion with Public Works is, is that culvert where it is right now with the half-mile movement, that's the best place for this? And so that's why the request is to put that there. I suppose, and you, you could even not take as much of, of Mr. Reese's property and have it a little skinnier right there, but just the alignment, the reason you put that there is it actually lets Mr. Reese, if he ever does want to sell, I heard him, and, and when I talked to him, I was actually the one that talked to you yesterday, sir. You know, these all become buildable lots versus if you put the street there, that, that connection eventually has to get up to Sunburst. And that makes all this area for Mr. Reese not developable. And that's really our, our mindset. And that's why we're, we're trying to be a good neighbor when we lay these sites out, because I get it, right now he doesn't wanna sell, but eventually he might. And if he, if he does, this is a better layout for him and actually adds value to his property in the future. To talk about the other, the, the NRD issue, and I'll, I'll put the bigger one up here. Uh, I, I'm not involved with that development to the west there, uh, north of Mr. Moore's site. I am aware that they're gonna have some sort of connection down here, but none of this, their plat, their preliminary plat, their layout, none of that's done. Uh, and I suspect, uh, that when they come and talk to the city, they're gonna require that that connection, uh, line up with our connection here on two-hundred-and-fourteen so that there's a full movement there. That, that's just, again, confirm that with, with Public Works as well, but traditionally that's what happens. Lastly, on Mr. Moore's statement about traffic. So I can tell you, Fort Street, um, this is SID six-oh-nine, this is a Falcone-led development up here to the north. We're actually expanding with the county, uh, with the SID right here in an interlocal to expand Fort Street. So that'll be a three-lane as well. So we get it, um, Mr. Moore is exactly right, there's a lot of traffic engineers, there's a lot of attorneys and planners involved in all these projects, and the one thing we keep in mind is traffic. I don't know the answer to what's happening down here on two-hundred-sixteenth where it deadends with Maple Street. I gotta believe that with the traffic impacts, that the county, when they actually get to the expansion of two-hundred-sixteenth Street with us, that they'll look at a, at a light there, but I, I don't know, and I, I honestly don't know the answer to that or how the county might address that. And the state, I should, I should say, when, when it come time, when it comes time for that. The, you know, we run into the same issue when you go Fort Street east all the way to two-hundred-and-fourth. We have the same issue there with the state and the county in our SID five-ninety-eight, uh, with the traffic signal. And the, the same idea is there, when the warrants are met for the, for an intersection there, they'll put a street light up. But again, we, we just, Mr. Moore is right, we don't have any say in that, we want safety too, but, um, we, we don't dictate those, those sorts of things. So I think I answered all the questions, um, unless there was something else I missed. And Kevin, I don't know if you have anything to expand on?
Uh, yeah, I can. Kevin Sassy, short Elliot Hendrickson, one-five-seven-five-zero West Dodge Road, suite three oh four. Uh, just kind of piggybacking on that. So typically with the city, the way we have to come in, uh, on these half-mile points is typically you have a right-of-way thirty-five feet there and thirty-five feet right here. So seventy-foot, uh, wide right-of-way that goes right over top of that section line. In this case, we wanted to avoid as much of that drainage area as possible, so that's why we shifted that north. And so that's why it's shown that way. We also showed it so that that road could come through and Tim Reese could, eh, sell that someday or develop it on his own and have lots that continue on the backside of ours. As you can see from this document right here. So he would have lots that back up against these lots that back to his property today. Right now, this is, uh, I think Brent had mentioned it. Yeah, so this is the property line right there. And I'm sorry, I kinda wrote on that, but we would be acquiring this ground right here, which is a little bit of right-of-way and one minor lot right there. But these back up to his property. And then in the future, someone would be able to take that road all the way through that connects to the Sunburst Avenue, which continues through, all the way through Arbor View as well. Instead of chopping off this area right here and then having to come through and connect to Sunburst that way, uh, and then dealing with that culvert modification down here. So what you'd have to do is redesign this culvert or put a new culvert right there. So there's added costs there. And so what we're trying to do is coordinate with one, the NRD, on their dam site. And they were, uh, in, in agreement with us on moving it. So now we have to also coordinate with Douglas County as well, per the recommendation report that we got. per the recommendation report that we got. It'll be widened to a three-lane in this section as part of our development. I believe later on, when the NRD goes in, puts their dam site in, it might be widened to a four-lane at that point. So I might have to go back and review the plans that we got from HDR for that. But if it were widened to a four-lane, yes, it would have to be expanded. For the three-lane, it should be fine.
So you'd indicated, excuse me, you indicated that you wanted to avoid the draining.
The what?
Area.
The drainage area, yeah, so that's that.
Because of cost?
Because of cost.
Your cost, developer's cost.
It'd be overall cost, it'd be SID cost.
Overall cost, yes, SID, so, okay. And you also proposed putting that drive-in or that connection in to 216th Street there to avoid having to pay for any costs regarding the culvert?
An additional culvert, culvert, yeah.
So all this is based on money?
True, so, I mean, remember, everything that we do as far as the SID goes for, those are public dollars, of which the city of Omaha has to prove that to make sure that the debt ratio is under 4%. So the analysis that's done here is, is it worth installing a whole new culvert? I'm guessing at how many hundreds of thousands of dollars that is for a new culvert right there versus trying to do an arms-length transaction with Mr. Reese to have something that avoids additional public debt? That's the goal, and that's usually what we do. I will tell you, on every other development, and this is what I told Mr. Reese yesterday, we're always sensitive to telling somebody that we want to, we have to take your property. We don't want to do that, we'd rather just buy it outright. On the four developments that we have to the north, we did the exact same thing. There's right-of-ways that we had to acquire, and those are all arms-length transactions. Usually the city's standards is they use what the base value that we're acquiring the ground from the farmer or whoever's selling it, and we approach Mr. Reese in this sense and say, this is what we paid for. You know, if you look at what the NRD did, they actually did, they actually got appraisals for that, and then they also looked at purchase agreements. And so their values differed based upon what their appraisal said or what their purchase agreement said. We would do the same here. No one wants to take anything, and again, like I mentioned, we're sensitive to even saying that, I'd rather it be an arms-length transaction, but that's just how this stuff is done from time to time.
And I can't remember that street there that you said was eventually going to connect into?
Sunburst Avenue.
Yeah, Sunburst. So, Mr. Moore, and this was your question too, and I, it's important to get this right. So this is Sunburst as you come west. What we're saying is by lining this street up right here and coming onto Mr. Reese's property, eventually, because our city, you know, and we support connectivity, this street's going to come through like this. So when you come east on Sunburst, the way we're laying this out allows, if Mr. Reese ever decides that he does want to sell his property, he will have buildable lots here. If we shorten this and bring it down here, he's not going to have buildable lots here. And so that's what, that's what we're trying to say. And again, I, we're obviously biased, but that does benefit his property in the event that he ever does want to sell it.
And Sunburst is already?
It's already there.
Connects to another subdivision.
Yep, so this is, this is the Arbor View, this is Sunburst. We're just connecting that per this, you know, the street design plan for this area to connect it with 216th Street.
So if I'm looking at that right, that Sunburst to the east there?
Right here.
Right, so if you just, yeah. And if you modified your plan any so that that Sunburst could come more, instead of curved, like you got straight?
Go straight, instead of curving to the northwest, go straight west.
Yep, and even if you did that, and I'm playing engineer.
It would have to, it would.
You're still going to run down here.
Major modifications to your site plan there.
Well, not just that, it's that culvert again, and we're tying into, I mean, keep in mind, the other thing I didn't touch on is there's a large interceptor sewer that we're currently building right now for all that development up north. That's, you know, a city master plan interceptor sewer. That interceptor sewer comes down here and actually goes right through there too. So, and that's being constructed right now, so we're also being mindful of that. So it's kind of a, this is a pressure point for this whole area is that you have the half-mile, you have the interceptor, you have this culvert, and you have a twenty-foot ravine right there, and it all just happens to be right next to Mr. Reese's property.
Just a second, Brent. Ryan, would you come up, please? Ryan, where Sunburst is coming out on the 216th, does it have to go there?
Ryan Haas, or the Public Works Department. So I apologize, I maybe could have expanded a little more on this this morning. I never know necessarily how much background information is necessary. This is a complicated situation, so if you take a look at what's going on here, and for just one minute, forget about any drainage way, let's just say it was flat and dry, this development would need an intersection, which ties in to 216th Street. It would need to line up with the corresponding intersection on the west side, wherever that happens. It was mentioned earlier, I believe by Mr. Beller, we can't support, it's not, it's not a safe situation, it's not a good design. We can't support having offset T-intersections. So it needs to be consolidated at a single point. And the other thing that will happen, as part of the development generally, by one SID or by collectively, by multiple SIDs as development occurs, is 216th Street will be widened to three lanes. So, we know what the requirements are generally, that there needs to be an intersection here which has aligned side streets on both the east and west side. And we know that 216th Street needs to be widened to three lanes. We also know that, bringing back in the topography, that there's the creek, and we have an existing culvert. So the overall question, and where we kind of identified it and set it up for further coordination to occur, I'm going to read the condition, just verbatim, so you know what we're recommending. Number six, the location of the intersection of 216th Street and Sunburst Avenue may need to be relocated, subject to concurrence by Douglas County, the NRD, and the Haven subdivision. So if you remember, several months back, we did have a preliminary plat that came through called the Haven. And their street connection to 216th originally was kind of plated in this general vicinity. But again, we, now that we know that we have this subdivision on the east side, we do need to have that overall coordination. We need to loop in the Haven development team, we need to loop back in the NRD, we need Douglas County to weigh in as well. So we need to identify collectively the location of that.
We lost him, Ronald.
So we need to, I don't, excuse me, thank you. So we need to identify the location collectively with the NRD and Douglas County, which
That development to the west, the Haven?
Yep.
That, that street can kind of, it can, at this point during design, it can drop down a little further, correct?
Down here?
Yeah. Tim was saying they're going to use, I think that's Scott Moore's lane, at this time. So that, yeah, that street meandering down.
So this one, yes, that's.
It can drop into any place.
Well, no, well, not any place, because there are dam designs, so.
I got that.
That complicates matters, obviously.
And that's why we need the NRDs to weigh in, because they've put some substantial amount of preliminary design work into this. I mean, it doesn't show up very well, but I'll lay my pen across, that's the dam right there. And then the spillway runs around the dam on this side here. So you can see the road has to run around the spillway, it can't encroach.
Spillway to the south. I used a poor choice of words there, but it could continue on down with that, with that road, the access road to the Haven.
So, we're comfortable with conditional approval, knowing that we need to loop in several other entities, NRD, Douglas County, the Haven, to kind of get around the table and figure out where is the best location for this intersection to occur. And that would have to be resolved, obviously, by the time we come back with the final plat.
What they've got on their plan is not, we don't know that to be the best location of Sunburst.
That's correct. It could be, but it could need to move as well. I did want to, if I could, address some of the concerns from Mr. Reese. It's always a sensitive issue when we have an adjacent property which is not part of a development. And the reason for that is, we need to set things up to, to keep in mind the long, long term. If and when Mr. Reese or some future property owner a hundred years from now decided they finally wanted to redevelop, we need to make sure that the infrastructure for that development fits in with what we're proposing now. And so we actually asked this development team to set up their street stubs to allow for that, to allow for a sensible way of Mr. Reese's property to develop. Now, he could live there for a hundred years, and that's fine, that's his right. He doesn't have to make any changes to his property or ever sell. However, and it's as a last resort, but there's certain things, sanitary sewers are, that's a good example, they flow by gravity, there are certain things that we can't avoid as far as acquisitions of easements. There's certain things as far as roadway infrastructure that we don't have a choice but to have SIDs facilitate the acquisition to incorporate that into their development. Sometimes that does involve, or oftentimes, it's a fairly regular or frequent condition, recommended condition of approval that the development team, the SID and the developer, provide for the acquisition of those little pieces of ground on the little corner there where their street needs to tie into the major street, because we know that's the most appropriate location. So it does happen all the time. We only use it as a last resort, or if absolutely necessary. In this case, I would suggest that some acquisition may end up being necessary.
So how do you, how does that work logistically? Mr. Beller referred to condemnation to acquire the property. So can anybody just say, I'm going to, you know, if you don't get, if you don't give us what we want, I'm going to condemn your property, and I'm going to take it from you anyway?
We always ask for, we always ask the development, the project team to try to reach an agreeable, a mutually agreeable price for the ground. And ninety-nine times out of a hundred, that takes place. In the event that the property owner does not, is unwilling to sell, then the city does have language that we put into subdivision agreements, which enables the SID to then use condemnation for the acquisition. And that's a process where a third-party appraiser determines the value of the ground. So it's not like, it's just, it's taken from the property owner. The third-party appraiser identifies the price, the SID then pays that price to acquire the ground from the property owners. So obviously, that's a last resort. We never want to, we would never want that to be the case. And we always ask the developers, the development team, to work to try to reach a mutually agreed-upon price.
Well, it sounds like there's still a lot of moving parts to this in order to determine where the appropriate intersection would be along 216th Street, right? And those conversations are ongoing or will be ongoing.
Yeah.
And how long do you, and it has to come back to us for final approval, I would assume.
That's.
This is just preliminary.
Yeah, so that's kind of the whole point, you know, one of the reasons we have preliminary and final separate on these types of things is to give conditional approval, if everyone agrees that it's appropriate, to allow coordination or further design refinements to take place. And then by the time the final plat comes back, yeah, we'll need an answer on that, and we'll need more information.
Hey, Ryan, while you're up here, Mr. Moore had some questions about, you know, traffic signals or stop signs or something that, with the added traffic. Have we looked at that yet, or is that going to have to be a combination with state and county, and maybe you could help him out?
Thank you for the reminder. It's a great question. We have the Haven on the west side, we've got this proposed plat running north from Fort. We have the fifth stage of Vistancia, then we have Calarasa, which includes an elementary school. So each of these SIDs is required to widen their adjacent arterial street to three lanes so that we can get the left-turn lanes where their side streets tie into the major street. So that's, that's one way of addressing the traffic generated by these developments. Now, he is correct. At a certain point, we're going to have enough trips on 216th Street where traffic signalization becomes warranted at 216th and West Maple. That is going to be a generator, or a lot of the side trips that are generated by these developments are going to go in that direction. So I checked, as he was giving his testimony, it is inside city limits. And so if, I don't know, because I don't have, I don't deal directly with it, but we have an engineer whose job it is to field requests from citizens who say, you know, things are getting worse out here, can you come look at it for traffic signals? We don't have the ability to monitor everything all over the city's jurisdiction, so we actually rely on that as a resource. So certainly would encourage anyone who feels, if we've gotten to that point yet, or certainly here in the near future as development picks up, if they feel that traffic is getting worse and worse, and they want to see if signals are warranted, now, you know, just because we get the request doesn't mean we go out and put them in right away. We have to study the intersection, measure the volumes, and there's federal standards that we use. But once we do meet those warrants, and if we get the concurrence from Department of Transportation, because it also is a state highway, then that's something that the city would look to construct at that time.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Sure, Scott, yeah, I closed the public hearing, but yeah, come ahead, give your name and.
You know, I am.
Name and address.
Yeah, Scott Moore, 4550 North 216th Street. Just a quick comment about the traffic light. At what time, you know, how many fatal accidents have to happen before that happens? Is there a five fatal accidents, or, you know, it's not just the traffic flow, it's the traffic on the highway, those guys are going sixty-five miles an hour, you have a small gap to get out. And at 3:30 in the afternoon, when you have the thirty kids backed up from Mount Michael, they're jumping out. Just stating that, maybe that's an engineering issue. If you want some insight on the NRD, I dealt with the NRD quite extensively over the last five to six years. We don't know when their dam's going to be built. We don't know when the Haven's going to do, they haven't even, they don't even have their final plat yet. I know that they don't even have their SID lined up. So they, you know, and then, you know, how long is it going to take for the warrants to be, you know, you know, exhausted? Five, ten, fifteen years, you know? Just throwing that out there, I'm not a proponent. I just want to make sure it's done right and in a manner that benefits the community. So I appreciate it, thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you. I also want to say that, Scott, yeah, Tim, come on down. Name and address again.
Tim Reese, 4545 North 216th Street. I just wanted to add one more thing here. They're putting this street through there. The county's not going to move this box culvert. That's, they remodeled that four or five years ago. They widened it, you know, for bike lanes and everything else. So, but this box culvert, I really feel, all they have to do is that would be their access down here off D Street. You know, if they buy this from me for, you know, eighty thousand dollars or something like that, there's a lot there, there's a lot there, there's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of lots. That just paid for everything, so this is a no-cost for them if they go this way. You know, they're just trying to save money at my expense, I feel. And I really feel that that intersection should be south to line up with the other developments that's going on.
You heard Ryan with Public Works here, it's not, this isn't in stone yet. There's a lot of, a lot of things that have to come together, and a lot of entities that are.
And I appreciate that, but you know, they talk about this Sunburst Avenue coming through here. Well, I have no plans to sell this, leave alone this. I mean, this road, it could never go through. I mean, if I don't sell, the next person that buys my place doesn't sell. I mean, you got a dead end there for, it doesn't hold any water, in my opinion. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Any additional comments, questions? Did you want to?
Brent Beller, 11440 Western Road. Ryan touched on this, so this is our preliminary plat. Part of the conditions of your approval is, we have to talk to the NRD about the location of this intersection. It very may well be the case that they tell us what Mr. Reese wants, which is we move it to the south. But at the end of the day, we don't dictate that, we have to, we developer, SID, we listen. So if they tell us that they want us to move that, that's part of our, that's part of your conditional approval. So I just want to make sure that we are clear on that as far as our preliminary plat goes. We will be in front of you again with the final plat.
We understand that. All right, thank you, Brent. Eric, you want to add anything?
Just introduce a few new topics that haven't been talked about. So I want to elaborate on 216th Street or connections. The report does talk about a few trails, so we talked about some of that. about some of that in the pre-meeting. Just wanted to briefly mention that. But of more concern is the far southwestern, I'll call it leg extension of, you know, this lot that, you know, the current property owner. It's, it's rather unfortunate. The business at the northeast corner of 216th Street and West Maple, I believe it's a landscaping or construction yard type of business, they have improvements that are located in the floodway. The new preliminary FEMA maps modified a little bit. There's not a large deal of change as it impacts that. But, I bring it up because this portion of this lot, or basically the southern half of the subject site, was included with the fifth phase of the Arbor View plat a couple of years ago. And as part of those effort to keep that plat moving along, you know, the current property owner at the time, you know, we're not developing the southern portion, which is now here before us in a couple of years. Basically, there was a subdivision agreement that the landowner acknowledged to remove the improvements from the floodway. So, on property they own, the business had encroached on, on their land, basically, but it's in the floodway. So, there's a subdivision agreement that, that should be removed. That has not yet been done. So, within the report and our recommendation, we are saying that the final plat cannot be placed on an agenda until that has been addressed. So, you know, it might take some cooperation. It's a little unfortunate because you do have an applicant who is trying to develop the land, obviously. You know, they're purchasing the land. You have a business owner, which I believe has also been sold. So, it's, it's complicated, but we can't let this get down the road further. So, I did just want to mention that. And I can give the recommendation of the report, but we are comfortable at this time with preliminary plat approval. But obviously, there is still some work to be done, both with that issue I just mentioned, as well as the connection to 216th and other conversations with, that involve other parties as well. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R4, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 33 conditions.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the rezoning from AG to DR and R4, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 33 conditions from the staff report.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Sod Longo? Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove 6-0.
I think that was our last item, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's have a motion for- Okay, sir. What, what item were you here for?
I have no idea. I got a email yesterday. Excuse me.
Yeah, bring it up, if you would.
I got an email yesterday that the meeting was today about a claim that I presented to the city clerk. It isn't. Well, this is, all I got was an email about the meeting today. And it's about an issue that I have with the inspectors.
Oh, that wouldn't-
That's different.
Yeah. That's not us.
I don't know.
We'll talk to you, sir. Oh, hey. Let's do the minutes and let's do-
Just a second. We've got- Come on down, Mass. What, what did- WD Investments? Was that on for? Okay. Okay. It's, that's, it's going to come, okay. Eric will take care of you. We got another one, sir. Yes, sir. What number? That was on for approval. Were you, were you here earlier, right at the beginning? Okay. I read all those consent items. That was on for consent. And it was approved. And I said, no further action will be taken today. You're welcome to stay or leave. So, you missed it.
You're welcome to come back next month and have some more fun if you'd like.
Okay. Do we have a motion for, for approval, well, a motion for the pre-minutes, pre-meeting minutes for December? We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore? Morris? Page? Sod Longo? Mr. Chair?
Abstain. Do we have a motion for the public meeting minutes from December? We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore? Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Abstain. All right. For election of officers, first is chairman. Do we have a nomination?
Nominate Greg Grozenboom for the chairman.
Okay. We have a nomination, a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Page?
Yes.
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess.
Do we have a motion for vice, nomination for vice chairman? We have a motion and a second and a nomination for vice chairman. Will you record the vote, please?
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes, I guess.
Moore? Morris? Page?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. We have a motion and a, do we have a second for chairman?
Yes, second.
We have a motion and a second.
Moore? Morris? Page? Sod Longo? Rosacker? Mr. Chair?
Yes.